Seben here tonight? We want to have a step up here for the microphone, William. Could you state your name and your address, even though we already stated it?
That's William Seben, Bill Seben, 9623 192nd Avenue Northeast.
Thank you. Could you explain, I know we got all this literature on it before the public and everybody that's here, could you explain what you, your variance, what you're requesting?
Yes, sir, I'm requesting a pool safety cover. It's an auto track, so it's a pool cover that's built into the pool itself on a track system. It opens and closes with a lock and a key and a code. It's kind of become the industry standard for pools these days. Other, there's communities where it's just, it's part of the process of getting your pool is, they come standard actually with the pool package. So it's like an $8,000 cover that your pool installers always put in the package. You don't really, I don't believe I was even given the option of not having it. Because most people want it because it's where the safety lies versus the old school notion that a fence will keep kids out. A pool that's locked and can't be opened truly keeps kids out. So this is what I'm going for because the fence is as well as another $8,000. And well, the city of Columbus, the variance staff report actually says this better than I do. It breaks down just the topographical nature of my lot. I mean, we're kind of in a low area here, so the house was built up. So where I want to put the pool, the only place I can put the pool is on part of this built-up spot, right? So there's a hill that drops off. So to put extra footings for a fence out there, which it doesn't work too well. We're sitting on 50 acres and we're at the end of a road. We have a long driveway, six hundred feet-ish. It's not a high-density neighborhood where anyone's going to pass through. So because I don't want, I don't like the look of a fence, I don't like the cost of a vertical fence, and because they're inefficient, I was hoping to have this variance pass that I could get the more updated and standard pool safety cover.
Okay, thank you. Jody, do you have any questions?
Um, yes, if this, if your like electricity or whatever would go out, does this pool have some kind of a, I don't know, something that would?
Fail-safe?
Yeah, fail-safe, thank you, Chris.
There is a, my understanding is that there is a manual option where you can hand crank the cover over. I'm not sure that it opens until electricity comes back.
I was thinking if the pool was open, something happened.
So it is my understanding that there is a, like a rope system that you can reach under and you pull much like a blind.
Okay.
And then it's pulled shut.
And then you could lock it.
And then you can lock it.
Okay, okay, that was my only question.
Barb, you have any questions?
Yes, Columbus's ordinance requires a fence around pools. So my concern is what kind of insurance do you have in addition to household insurance if something should happen?
Okay. Well, we have a household insurance. We have an umbrella policy, is that what you're asking as well?
Yes.
Our insurance agent was, we had this conversation with our insurance agent who is uninterested in, how do I put this? The pool safety cover is the standard. They prefer a pool safety cover over a fence. So there's no increase to us whatsoever with a pool safety cover.
And if somebody should be hurt or injured or somebody should die, how much coverage do you have?
I could get that exact number for you. I mean, I believe our umbrella policy is a million-dollar umbrella policy.
Okay, okay.
I can't remember how much we're insured to up until the umbrella kicks in.
And you don't have anything from your insurance company?
I didn't think to bring that, no.
Okay. Like I say, pools are risky. And most of the ordinances are meant to protect children under the age of five. And I think both things are necessary to protect children because things happen very fast with kids. They're attracted to water, you know? And I understand that you have teenagers and they're, you know, they know what pool safety is. But I would be concerned for anybody that comes to visit you. You know, even if the child is supervised, things happen so fast. I had this very thing happen when I was young and doing pool maintenance. Both my husband and I were there working on the pool. Our son disappeared in less than a minute and he was standing at the bottom of the pool. So I know that there can be other, you know, issues other than just...
Absolutely, I totally agree with you. I appreciate your concern. It does come down to the homeowner. The homeowner has to ensure those gates are locked if they have a fence, that the fence is maintained, it's not falling apart, can't be crawled under or over. And the homeowner has to make sure that the pool cover is closed.
Okay.
So...
And now, is the pool cover a plastic, like a waterbed? Does it have the waterbed feel to it or is it solid or?
It's like a waterbed feel.
Okay. And you know that water can collect on that?
Yes.
So you'd watch any visitors or whatever for that?
Oh, right, yeah, it doesn't, you're right, it's flush with the top of the pool itself. So some water can gather on it, but we're talking inch, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I guess.
The advantage for the homeowner, in addition to the safety, is a savings cost in the heating to the environment for less chemicals and evaporation of water. The homeowner is, you know, there's incentive for the homeowner to use that pool cover whenever the pool itself is not being used.
Yeah, I understand that.
Chris, do you have any?
Yeah, I did read through the ASTME standard. And they do actually cover weight of the cover that it's got to support. It also covers pooling water on top and that it has to meet a certain standard that it doesn't pool water. The one question I have, I did call my insurance company, which is State Farm, and they, right away told me, no. But then they came back and asked, are you on acreage? And then some additional questions because the underwriter said he would be willing to look at possibly just eliminating the fencing and going with the pool cover. So not all insurance companies are using this as a standard over the fence. But I think they're willing to look at it in certain situations.
Okay.
You know, I agree with you, Barb. I think pools are risky. But that's up to the homeowner and you know the risk you're taking. And life is a risk, so.
Pam?
Just going back to the power failure. So say you have a power failure and the pool cover is in place. It still would require a key to open?
It does, there's a box that's locked with a key. Then behind that box is generally a code that you have to punch in.
Okay.
So it's electronic, from my understanding. I've never bought one of these before.
Right.
But it's a locked box with a key. Behind the door is a code, a secret code, right? Without power, I imagine it doesn't open.
So but it would still require a key, it wouldn't shut the, it would not shut it down. It'd be fail-safe too, that you'd still need to have a key to manually open the cover.
Correct.
I did go out to their website and look at the different options. And what they showed was a toggle switch. But it's with a locked cover, that you need the key to open the cover. Then they also had a key pad that was a Wi-Fi based, where that did not open and close the cover from what I could tell. But you could be given notice that the pool cover was open or that it's been open for four hours or something. But it's, the Wi-Fi is not what's used to open and close it. You always need the toggle switch with the locked cover that has the key.
Okay.
The Wi-Fi tells you if your kids have opened it.
It does, there's actually four people that you can program that can use the keypad to open it and then you can get notified.
Okay.
Just a follow-up question, Mr. Chair. Did you call your insurance company and find out if they would do an amendment to your policy for the pool?
I did talk to my insurance agent and there was no amendment needed.
Okay.
My insurance agent was familiar with where we live, so maybe that was part of it. He knows we're on 50 acres, he lives kind of in the neighborhood. He talked, he said, yep, let me double-check with that. He called me back a minute later and said, yeah, there's, we like the pool covers.
Okay.
You're with American Family then, right?
I was.
One other question here, just to put this into perspective. I know where you live and it is very isolated out there. How many trick-or-treaters you get a year?
No, we don't get trick-or-treaters unfortunately.
You don't?
I missed that part.
Okay.
We just moved there a couple of years ago, so.
All right, well, welcome to the world. Same way, but it is an isolated area. You have anything else you'd like to add to us?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay.
I have one more question. If this cover should fail, say halfway open, halfway closed, does the company that sold it to you have like an emergency service or anything?
I would have to look into that for you, I don't.
You don't know?
I'm not going to make up stories for you. I don't know how they fail. I know that you can manually close them.
Yep.
I don't think you can manually open them though because to open it, it's on a big motor and it's reeling it in.
Yep.
So everything would just flop into the pool as you're trying to push it back. I think there's some locking mechanisms that unlock as it opens. But I believe you can pull them shut because it's like I said, like a, like a blind. Gets stuck halfway open, I'm not sure how.
Or if it should tear or something like that.
Right. So I saw, I've seen videos of people parking Ford F-150 or Ford F-350, four doors on top of them. So they're pretty robust.
Well, the...
The weight to be called, to be technically a, I forget the initials. What is it, the ASTM, a pool safety cover has to be at least 300 or 400 and some pounds? I think it's written up. 485 pounds.
485, yeah.
But that hasn't stopped the companies from making them stronger. That's just the minimum to make, to get that label stamped on them.
Okay.
Any other questions? Nothing else?
Can't think of anything else.
Okay, it's our protocol usually just to ask you to step back, maybe sit down in a chair right behind you so we can have the right to call you back if we have any questions. And we're going to open this up to the public hearing, to everybody. And anyone who has an interest in this manner can step forward and present testimony as evidence in support of their position. And if you come forward, we'd like you to say your name and your address. Is there anybody that'd like to make a comment or a statement? Like an auction house, going once, going twice, nobody's coming? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing then. And we'll take, we'll discuss it up here. So start with Chris.
You know, looking through the criteria for variance and the three state requirements per the statute and what the city has found, excuse me, I got a call, too, my voice is going to be a little weird. I think they've met the statute requirements based on what I'm reading and what the staff recommendation is, so I, you know, I... Would a cover and a fence be the best? Sure it would, but is it reasonable? I don't think it is. So I'm okay with it.
Pam?
I agree with it. If he has his right to put on his property to have a pool and he is investing in an $8,000 cover, that we climbed, as a kid, I climbed the fence, we went to the neighbor's pool, so, you know, I'm not, it's not the end-all, be-all for me. So I feel that I'm for, I'm good with it.
Jody?
I feel that he meets all the requirements. And I know that the pool fencing is a state statute and we have it in our ordinance. But I feel like the pool cover meets what is needed. And I think we should actually look at our ordinance to maybe add that as a caveat somewhere in our ordinance that pool covers would be accepted.
Thank you, Barb.
I think it should be both a fence and a pool cover.
Okay. Well, I'll just add a little here too. I talked to, my niece has got a pool and just had one put up in Hastings. And it's an in-ground pool and has some of these covers on it. And the next house is probably the distance of this room here. And it's in a subdivision and they got a walkway by it. And Hastings granted a variance on it and they're adjusting theirs, just like you said, Jody. And then I read here also that the city of Rochester allows it. So I think maybe we're just behind times a little here. Maybe we do have to look at the codes and kind of adjust them and whatever. So, does anybody like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion. That we, the planning commission, send forward the recommendation of approval for the variance at 9623 192nd Avenue, Columbus, Minnesota, Anoka County, with full agreement by the planning commission for approval.
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
On nay, we'll push it on to the council then. Thank you, we're all done.
He's done with the planning commission, he has to go before the city.
Yep.
I'm sorry, sir. It's, no, you can stay now. It's going to go up before the council, they'll have to vote on it. But this has our recommendation, minus one vote. Item number nine on the agenda, it's public hearing and discussion, 7162 and 7222, 167th Avenue Northeast. John Arnt excavation, IUP, and variance request for an aquaculture fish pond. Rochelle, could you read the public hearing on that? I mean, a public notice on that?
Sorry about that. City of Columbus Public Hearing Notice, variance. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the City of Columbus Planning Commission on Wednesday, July 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the City Hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider a variance request to allow the truck hauling of 16,133 cubic yards of sand from the required direct access to minor arterial or collector roadway as defined in the Columbus Comprehensive Plan to a local gravel residential roadway, 167th Avenue. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Applicant is John Arnt. Property owners are John Arnt and Richard Corvash. Property location is 7162 and 7222, 167th Avenue Northeast in Columbus, Minnesota, 55025. Legal description as listed. Signed Elizabeth Mersko, zoning administrator.
Thank you. Could the applicants come forward, Mr. Arnt and Mr. Corvash? Could you state your names and your addresses again?
John Arnt, 7162, 167th Avenue, Forest Lake.
Thank you. You might have to pull that mic up there, Richard, a little closer.
Rich Corvash, 7222, 167th Avenue.
Okay, well, just as you probably heard in the other public hearing, we'd like you to explain what you plan to do. We've got all the literature, but the public out here would like to know, so.
Well, there's two existing ponds there right now and they're not deep enough for fish. So I have the connections through the business that I worked in for 40 years to clean them out and trade the material for the excavation of the ponds. So that's what we've been working on for the last two and a half to three years. We went through the Army Corps of Engineers, the state of Minnesota, the DNR, the Rice Creek Water District, Anoka County, and now we're here at Columbus Township.
Mr. Corvash, you have anything to say on this?
Pretty much the same, I've been out there 47 years, so ponds have been there since I've been there, so.
Okay, so you're trying to make two ponds into one pond?
Correct.
And one of the ponds on your property, Mr. Corvash?
Both of them are partially.
Both of the ponds are kind of?
Partially in mine.
On both of our properties.
Yes.
Oh, it's in between?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, you know, I read through a lot of literature here and I'm sure all of the commissioners here have read through a lot of stuff here. And did you have a starting date on this?
Well, we got to get the permit first. So I've been working on it for, like I said, two and a half to three years. And as soon as we get a start or the permit approved, then we can find a place where we need the material.
You know, I was reading through this and I couldn't, I, this is kind of out there in the question, but you got to haul the material off the property.
Correct, that's what the Army Corps of Engineers and the Rice Creek Watershed wants us to do.
So my idea is, how come you just don't haul it over to Mr. Corvash's place?
Because they don't want us to stockpile any material on site and move it at a later time.
Are there any neighbors real close that would want it?
We border each other, right next door to each other, the ponds are between us. And then in between the ponds, there's a part of the woods there. That's where they want to make a channel through it and tie them together.
Okay. Well, what side should I start on? We'll start with you, Chris.
You know, thank you for letting us tour your property the other night. You, say you started on this two, three years ago?
Correct.
Okay, and I do notice on the Minnesota Wetland Conservation Act, the notice of decision that it does talk about you have to haul the dirt off right away or the sand.
What was that?
That you have to haul the sand off right away?
Yes.
And that document is dated 1/7/2019, so that was last January. My question is, knowing that the ordinance at that time with the city was with the hauling, why did you not come in for a variance at that time? Because right now, it's, you're, you have this in place that you have to haul the sand off in order to accomplish, to do this, yet most of these are all based too on approval of city ordinance and state.
Well, I originally started this project in 2007 when we were going to haul that material to the horse track. And then it got, we couldn't get the permits through all the government agencies, so we let it go for a while. And then when I, I had time off of work, I decided to get back at it and try and get it all resolved. So this has been going on since 2007 originally. And then I started back up two and a half, three years ago.
And the ordinance for the mining is what, since 2016, I believe, for hauling on non-arterial roads?
Yep.
So I just, I question that. It's like the cart before the horse, but, so.
Well, I got the original set of paperwork for it if you want to see it.
No, I am just going by what's in front of me.
Yeah.
And I just, with the dates, you know, I question why you weren't in earlier applying for the variance to be able to haul.
Well, like I said, at the time, I didn't have time. I spent a lot of hours trying to get this through, going through all the government agencies. I mean, it took two years alone just going back and forth with the Rice Creek Water District. And the Army Corps of Engineers approved it right away. The DNR approved it right away. The state of Minnesota approved it within two weeks, so.
I think what Chris is asking is why did you start with them and not with the city to find out if the, is that what you're?
Yes. Sorry, should have made it simpler.
I think that's what she was asking.
You done, Chris?
Yeah, for now.
Pam, do you have anything?
Well, mine would go more about the hauling. So we've had quite concerns when Sherco did their first run on their phase out on Thernbeck Farm. They took a ton of sand out of there and so we kind of looked at that ordinance a little bit. But that's a lot of trucks for quite some time. So I'm interested to hear what the neighbors will have to say on that.
Jody?
A couple of questions too. You say you're going to, and thank you again for letting us tour also. This is going to be a solely recreational pond?
Yep.
Just for fishing, for you, your family, your neighbors?
Right.
No other entities like fish sales, harvesting fish?
Just to be from people in the neighborhood?
So no commercial?
No.
Fish sales? And... And you know, you've read the mining ordinance for the hauling restrictions?
Yes, I have.
On the arterial roads? Okay. And then... I'll have to come back, I can't find, I know what I'm looking for, but I can't find it.
Okay. Barb?
Yeah, my concerns are just the size of the excavation. 16,000 cubic yards.
Yeah.
And the average dump truck, large one, carries what? 10 cubic yards?
On the average, like 12 yards.
Yeah, and so I'm concerned really for your neighbors because that's going to be a lot of truckloads. I know you said you were going to just have three trucks there, but if you figure 25 trucks a day, that's only 250 cubic yards a day. And you got 16,000 cubic yards.
I had all the neighbors up and down the street sign and they all agreed, they're all fine with it.
Did you explain how many truckloads?
Yes, I did.
Over 1,000?
Yes.
Trips? Because it doesn't say that in the paperwork that you, that we have, you know, that you had them sign. It just says that you said there would be three trucks there and I didn't see anything about the 16,000 cubic yards. I know one of your neighbors is very concerned about the noise and the dust and the truck traffic that's adjacent to both of your properties. And he's also very concerned about his well with the de-watering, I guess is what you call it?
Yep, de-watering.
Yeah, and how do they control that? How do you, how do you control where the water comes from when you're de-watering?
Well, they put well points down. I contacted Blake DeWater and we worked with him for years. And they put these sand points down. They only go down 20 feet into the groundwater. And the average well is over 100 and some feet deep in the area. And it will not affect their well. So I've talked to two different well companies and they, and they both agreed. And it says, and Blake DeWatering told me the same thing. And they said, if there is a problem, we just shut the pumps off until we resolve it.
But then your neighbor would have to go without water?
No, they wouldn't, the water would come back within hour, a couple hours.
These ponds are only about four driveways west of Potomac. So it ain't going way down the road, just about four driveways down.
What about their concerns about the noise and the dust and the truck traffic?
Well, it's no different than on the Blacktop Road.
Well, except they, that's their neighborhood, it's a residential area.
Well, like I said, I went and I had 17 neighbors sign that petition that they all agreed on it. They're all for it.
Well, I guess.
I just want to clarify something. You said that US Army Corps of Engineers approved it?
Yes.
I thought they said they had no jurisdiction over it.
They approved it and they, and then they wrote a letter that they have no jurisdiction over it.
So I just wonder how you approve something and you have no jurisdiction over it? That's all, just for the record.
Yep.
They had nothing to do with it, in other words.
No, I met with Brian Yagle several times and he, he was all for it. And then when he read all the regulations and stuff, he said that they have no authority over it and he wrote a letter saying they... And they, and he wrote a letter saying they had no authority, but they approved it.
Okay. Jody, did you find what you were looking for?
Yeah, it's in Chapter 9, actually. And it just states that the intent of the city to allow excavation and grading and filling does not result in unnecessary loss of upland. And it also states, or residential property, recreational ponds less than one acre in area for that stormwater management or onsite wetland restoration and replacement. So this is 2.8 and that you're looking at for that upland piece.
Correct.
Yeah. I mean, they're a little bit restrictive in the residential areas as far as utilizing that.
I don't know how residential you call it. They're five acre minimum lots.
Yep.
So it's, I mean, it's not like there were enough. Like the neighbor across from Eric, I think he's got 80 acres. The neighbor next to him's got 160 acres. And then the people on the south side of the road, they have on average 10 to 15 acre lots. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's four houses that would, would go by before we'd be on the Blacktop. And I measured it with a wheel meter. It's 1,050 feet.
Hey, Elizabeth, with the Corps of Engineer, I did notice that they did say they didn't have jurisdiction because there wasn't a discharge. What does that mean?
You know, the, the Army Corps of Engineers has jurisdiction over waters that are, that lead to public waterways. And although they don't have a map, they kind of make a decision based on whatever criteria they have in that office. We're due to have a map out, so it's a little bit more clear. But in this particular case, I think they made a determination that, that this particular pond did not lead to a waterway that they had jurisdiction over. And I think that overall, looking at the variety of different jurisdictions, I think that when you look at a particular project, and when you're looking at a project, and when the different jurisdictions look at a project, they look at the overall project and what they're trying to do. And I think Mr. Arnt presented to those different jurisdictions that this was going to be a recreational pond for agriculture. And in that vein, he was able to get an exemption from the rules because in agriculture, there's exemptions. With those exemptions, however, you have to haul out the, the sand material. And you can't put the fill on the property. And so you get the exemption as long as you meet the criteria. If you don't, if you, if you decide to leave the fill on the property, then you are no longer exempt. So it depends on how you present your facts and what your project is, as determining how you're going to get your approvals.
So I know you explained that, Elizabeth. So if they wouldn't have gone this way, they could have left. If they'd have got approvals from Rice Creek or whatever, Watersheds and all that, they could leave the sand on the property.
I think that would have been a very long process. And I don't know whether he would have been able to get fill permit because that's what it becomes. It becomes fill. And I don't know exactly what he would have had to do in order to do that. But basically, that's, I mean, that's what happens. And when we do a development project, you know, developer comes in, and I think you've heard this before, where he comes in and says, I either have enough soils to balance my site, which means they keep all the soils on their site and they, they make their building pads and such, or they have too much or too little. They got to either got to truck it off or they got to bring it on because they can't balance the site and make the stormwater ponds. So the rules are very, you know what I mean, similar if you're just doing a straight excavation project. Here, Mr. Arnt presented his project as an agriculture pond, and that's what he wanted to do. And so that becomes an exception. In the rules, there's an exception for agriculture.
Well, Mr. Arnt, Mr. Corvash, you must know that we passed a new codes or whatever in 2017, just recently. You know, and it was the previous council or whatever that did that. And there was a reason they did it. And it's pretty hard sometimes to jump over the fence and say, well, now that you made this new rule, we're going to adjust it a little. So I just want you to understand that this is a difficult decision to make. I mean, I don't think any of us have any issues about building a fish pond. It's just that the size is what's the problem here, I think. That's my opinion, anyway. If it was a small, let's dig it out and 50 trucks are going down the road, maybe we could, you know, look at it. But right now, I, I look at it and say, this is a mammoth. You know, 1,000 trucks going down the road. It's, it's something that we had up farther north, up on John's Black Dirt. And that caused a lot of issues. I just laying the groundwork, I must remember that.
Oh, yeah.
So it, it's a tough road to haul up on this, you know, on these issues about hauling trucks. Does anybody have any other questions? Mr. Arnt or Mr. Corvash?
I do have one other one. I see from the, oh, there was a letter given to us, and it was from the city engineer. And at one time, when you were applying for these permits with the city, you kind of applied as a recreational purpose, but that in two different places, let's see, to grow market largemouth bass, sunfish and yellow perch in the local area?
No.
It's never been talked about?
I think I seen that too.
I did see it.
Somebody wrote it.
I think it was the?
The engineer that I was using Wayne Minor wrote it, but.
Posler, Dennis Posler.
This is from the, the packet we have is, is from the city's engineer.
Okay.
From TKDA. And this was just written in there that unclear really what the project is. Because at some time, it must have been stated that there was this for raising largemouth bass and sunfish. And the secondary purpose would be for recreational fishing.
It was for recreational fishing. And I, I have a guy that was going to stock it for me out of St. Cloud. The original Steve Hocktell was going to do this. He was the one that got me started on the project. And he passed away a couple of years ago.
Elizabeth, do you know where this is coming from?
I think this came from, from Wayne Jacobson. One of his narratives in the, from the Rice Creek Watershed's permits. Because I don't know where else he would have gotten the language.
It was what Ben wrote up. I think Ben included the letter in the, when you sent us the email regarding the ordinances.
Was it with this packet?
It was with the findings.
Yeah, findings, fast, yeah.
And that's what we're looking for now. And I agree with Elizabeth. It might have been from Wayne. And that might have been in one of the packets for the excavation, something like you said in the past that was said.
I'm good.
No other questions? John or?
Yes.
Now, Richard, you got anything else you'd like to say or? Okay, just like I noticed before that the protocol is that you have a seat back and we can call you back up later after we open it up to the public or if we have any questions.
All right.
All right, thank you. We're going to open up the public hearing to everybody. And anyone who has an interest in this matter can step forward and present testimony as evidence in support of their position. And as I stated before, we want you to say your name and your address. Is there anybody who would like to make a statement? Could you come on up? Thank you.
My name is Ceele Nyheart. I live up on Vassar Street 18516. I don't know if that matters. Anyway, I can go back over 40 years with this trucking problem at John's Black Dirt. And other people here probably are in the same boat. We fought for years about this sand digging operation in a residential district. I'll tell you, it's been, it's been an uphill climb. I'm not sure how I stayed in Columbus Township because of that. But the boards kept letting it go and letting it go. And it kept growing bigger and bigger and bigger until we had the, the side dumpers. And you live there too. You know the side dumpers that went by. And all the hauling and the ruined roads, especially the gravel roads. Some days, they didn't haul it all. And other days, it was like a war going on out there. The noise, the dust, the disruption, the fear for the kids. You talk about the, the swimming pool issue right before this and the fence. And we're talking, who's going to protect this water if the neighbor kids can come over and fish and all that? Sounds great. Fish pond, we're big fishermen. However, I think that, I'm not sure who Mr. Arnt worked for. Maybe he worked at the company that we're talking about, the Forest Lake Contracting. But we finally got it to a point where the ordinance, ordinance was finally passed to protect the citizens that live on the residential streets. And that, we even had to wait four extra years because the former mayor chose that number of years for them to get down, get their sand, do all their, their bidding. And for every truck that went in, there was stuff in it. And then the truck went out. So it was always a full load in, full load out. So we're not just talking hauling out. They were bringing in. It was, it's ridiculous. We never really had any success when we complained. I know things got heated many times. There's people that are no longer on the board because of this, the decisions that were made. They did not listen to really how bad it was down there for us. And it impacted quite a few people, a lot of people. And for anybody that says that it's not a problem when your dishes are shaking in your cupboards, my neighbors, a couple of them couldn't come tonight. And they said, make sure you tell them about my dishes rattling in the cupboards. It's bad. And they never, ever minded the speeds. One of my neighbors put up his own sign and tried to slow them down. I threatened to lay myself down in front of a truck one day. That's how bad it can get. So anybody thinks that this is a simple operation, it's not. And it's going to go on and on. And the weather's going to impact and the time. And then the winter comes, and then they're back again. You'd have respite in the winter is the only time you'd have respite. But when the digging is going on, there was no respite. And even when trucks weren't hauling down in my end, I was right down at the end where the pits are, the noise almost never stopped. It was like constant running and beep, 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 and back and forth. It's a nightmare in a residential neighborhood. And I just want to warn everybody that lives in that area that if you think it's going to be okay, it's not. And I don't know who he's going to have hauling all this stuff. We started with dump trucks. We ended up with big side dumpers. You know, it grows and grows and grows. And you can't get rid of it once it's grown. It's like a cancer in the neighborhood. And there are some of us that even when a truck comes down the road, the old PTSD strikes again, thinking, oh, my God, they're not running. I've even called Elizabeth and said, oh, my God, there's trucks coming down the road. And here it was a septic truck or something. But that's how bad it gets when you are. I have grandkids that I take care of. And I had signs out and, and things that I got kids here. I've shake my fist at them. Endless. And the road is ruined. I mean, our road is a wreck from that. And it's, they've had to keep adding and adding and adding. Until now, the driveways, mine's up higher, but a lot of driveways are up on a cliff. So don't tell me it didn't impact a neighborhood. We all know anybody here that's been around at all and should probably be aware of this issue. And I just want to say, don't vote for this to go through. I understand what the guy wants. It's, I'm sorry, I just object to it vehemently. We've got the ponds down there. Anybody could go back in there any day and drown. My grandkids, anybody else is around the neighborhood. They're 35, 40 feet deep. The other thing I want to mention, you talked about wells. Our well sputtered every summer. And we, we got through. We didn't have to get a new one. And we tried to say, please, you know, make them pay for it if they, if they drain our water, we lose it. And other, a few other people that were close by had the same problem. Just that low pressure sputtering. It's, it's, and the pumps running, okay? You got to pump the water down in order to get to the sand. So guess what runs all the time? You want us to lay in bed at night and listen to a pump running all the time? Go for it. It's, it's not a good deal. We were supposed to get inspections on the, the well that they put in. I never saw anybody down there. And I think we called and asked. And I don't know if we ever even found out. I think we said, we don't know who's reading it. So Elizabeth knows what we went through. And she had to listen to it because she was the key person to call at the time and still is. So I just recommend that you don't open that up again because that will leave Forest Lake Contracting open to doing it again. And he's still got sand down there. In the, in the last couple of years that he had the opportunity to get the sand out, take it over to his business or wherever, he wasn't digging that much the last two years. And now he wants to come back and get it. And we know that. We know that. I don't know if he's here, if he'd admit to that, but I'm sure that's the plan. So he would love to see everybody approve that this ordinance get pushed aside. And I pray to God, nobody takes that ordinance away from us at this point because I don't want to go through it again. I don't want to have to sell my property. And I have 10 acres. I got a nice place, peace and quiet. It's quiet this year. So I appreciate that it finally ended, but I don't, this scares the heck out of me to even think that it could start up again. That, that was a hard-won ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to step forward? Yep, we have one gentleman here. State your name and your address. Thank you.
Ryan Zwanitzer, 6918 167th Avenue, Columbus. John went around to the whole neighborhood. I actually went with him a couple of times to meet some of the neighbors and explain to him what was, what his plans were and everything. He did explain the volume that was coming out. I mean, he was very clear. He answered all the questions that any neighbor ever asked him. He didn't, he didn't have, not have an answer to it. So I think he was very proactive in that way. I guess my question is, what do you guys consider residential and non-residential? Because Potomac Street carries hundreds of trucks daily. The only difference between Potomac Street and our street is we're a gravel road with 30 mile an hour speed limit. Potomac is paved with 50.
That's a county road.
Okay.
That's a difference.
But that's the same, that's still considered a residential area, is it not?
Right. But it's a, it's a county road. Cattle River is a county road. Broadway is a county road.
I just hear a lot of talk about the excavation in a residential area. So my question is, what, what with the truck traffic that goes down in that residential area, I get that it's a county road versus a city road. But for, for disturbance of neighbors, there, there is no difference.
You're probably right on that as far as truck noise.
I mean, there are hundreds of trucks that go down. Shaw uses that road, North Pine, Forest Lake.
But they're built up. Those roads are built up a lot stronger.
And that's an arterial road. Your city street is not an arterial road.
Yep.
And this, this ordinance specifically states that if you're going to mine, you have to come off directly onto an arterial road.
Okay.
And that's the, that's the bottom line to this whole thing. He doesn't come off of an arterial road. Our hands are tied. The ordinance states. Our hands are tied, the ordinance states it.
And then as far as seeing that you're opening up, you know, a larger space and it's more dangerous for kids and, you know, people in general, you know, I have ten acres, and seven and a half of it is swamp. I fear because of the cattails and the muck that I have in my yard, I have two kids. If that was open water, I would feel much more comfortable about that than muck swamp area. So I don't see that the size of the pond being an issue, I guess, just as a neighbor. And I think it would be a pretty cool thing to have in the neighborhood.
Well, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to step forward? Okay, if no one's stepping forward, oh, we have. Why don't you wait up here a minute? All right, now say it. I know where you live.
You know what we went through. Why would you open that can of worms again?
Hold on a minute. Did you get his name in that?
Can you repeat it one more time?
Yeah, repeat. Yeah, she couldn't hear you because of the microphone.
Richard Mike, 1-8429 Bassett. There's an ordinance out there now. Why would you change it? Why would you even consider changing it? With the mess that we went through for four years, and you've all seen it, why would you even consider changing it or amending it? What's he gonna do with the dirt? Sell it?
It's going somewhere.
You know where it's going.
Not me.
You've seen it.
I did.
Yeah? What was it, every two a year or three a year, one of the trucks would go off the road? Why would you do that? Why would you do that for the citizens of Columbus?
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to get up? I see, and one, we're gonna close the public hearing, and we're gonna open it up for discussion.
Mr. Chair, you have to recognize two letters that were in your packet as part of the public hearing.
Do we have to read them?
I don't think Mr. Flowers indicated he wanted it read, but we can just recognize that Mr. Flowers at 16524 McKenzie Street, he was not able to attend. He did draft a letter for the record, so we'll consider that public testimony. Also, we did receive a letter from John Freed. The letter is in your agenda packet in the additions. He did ask that that letter be read into the hearing minutes. And so if the chair wants to read that letter or recognize that letter, certainly we can have that in the record.
Want me to read it then? It's dated July 15, 2019. Columbus Planning Commission, reference Arnt, and Corvash Public Hearing for July 17, 2019. Dear Planning Commission members, we aren't able to attend the hearings for this matter and wish to express our firm support for the project and approval of all three permit applications. We have lived here since 1980 and commend the applicants as good neighbors and know of no reason that the permits should be denied. We must say, however, that it is unfortunate that this degree of red tape is necessary for a straightforward project. For the city to require three different permits for removal and movement of the sand for the same project seems like an overkill and unnecessary inefficiency. Please consider streamlining the ordinance to simplify the process and increase the application of common sense. We request that this letter be read during at least one of the hearings and incorporated into the minutes for all three hearings. Thank you for your consideration of our views. John Freed, Karen Freed. Okay, so we have everything recorded now? Okay, now we open up for discussion among the planning commission. Chris, would you like to start?
Sure. I have no problem with a fish pond. But based on our role, we need to look at the statute. And in order to pass a variance, there's standards that have to be met, and there's three factors that have to be met. You must meet all three. And with the trucking, being in a rural residential area and not being connected to an arterial road, you can't meet all three with that condition. And with that, I can't see us going any further because, to me, you can't meet all three. The trucking is the issue. And I noticed in the staff findings, right now Potomac in the 2030 comp plan is considered a minor arterial road, but in the 2040 comp plan, which has been not adopted yet, but the city council has approved it, that's not a minor arterial road. And part of the code is that. So now you not only have 167th, you've got Potomac that would be traveled on through rural residential area with the trucking. So you really don't meet the ordinance. Or the statute, and that really is what it is. The statute is not meant to grant a variance. And with the variance not being met because of the trucking, the IUP can't be put into place because you can't meet the statute recommendations. So I just don't see how we can approve it.
Well, that was a good summary. Thank you.
Jordy?
I have to agree with Chris. The mining ordinance is pretty straightforward, and it was designed so that our residents would be protected as the ultimate end to what other families have had to deal with. And we don't have the power to override that ordinance.
And just going back to the other issues that we had in the past with that sunset date, what do we have, five years on that to get that all the way?
Four years.
But we started it, and then by the time we got through everything, it was all five years, and it was brutal.
And just another caveat to that, there's other companies that have wanted to extract and do mining that now can't because of that ordinance. And so there's already been a precedent set that it's not allowed.
Barb, do you have anything?
Yeah, I would just like to explain to the applicant what the three tests are, and it's the use of the property in a reasonable manner. No one's saying that you can't expand your pond, but it's the size and the quantity of sand that you wanna haul out of there. It's going to cause a major disruption for the neighbors, whether they're happy about it or not. Several of them aren't happy about it. And then the circumstances have to be unique to the property, and your plight is, it can't be caused by the landowner. And in this case, you're causing your own problem, more or less. So, and then the final one is difficulty, the practical difficulty, and it will alter the character of the locality. You'll have this huge three-acre pond, you know, whereas it would be nicer if maybe you made a smaller pond and did some, you know, landscaping or something around it. You could still have fish. It's just the size, I think, that is troubling. And plus, we can't do it simply because of the ordinance. So it's not because we don't understand what you want, it's just the size.
Well, I'll put my two cents in it too. I don't think anybody up here is against fish ponds or anything like that. And I agree with Barb and everybody that, we go back to the beginning, if you wanna dig your pond down fifty feet, throw the sand on the side, I mean, I don't know if that's environmentally bad or whatever, but I don't think that's a problem. The problem comes, we just passed the codes two years ago. We still have John's Black Dirt hanging in the air, and I don't think the city wants to go through that again. And I have to agree with all four of you. Would anybody like to make a motion here? Unless you have something to add?
Looking at the staff report for the variance, I think our city attorney outlined a motion as to, he wasn't quite sure which way. The planning commission was going to make its recommendation, but in that staff report, there is an example of language for a motion.
I'll read it. Denial motion to recommend to the city council adopting the above findings to deny the application for a variance requested to the requirements of the city code section 7A822 Diaz and David, that the IUP for mineral extractions at the property have direct access to a minor arterial or collector roadway, and that all haul routes shall be, similarly, be limited to minor arterials or collective roadways. We have someone to second that?
I'll second the motion for denial.
And we'll put it up for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none? We'll pass it.
Could we just make sure that the letter from TKDA is included in that motion?
Okay, let's back her up then. We want to add, it's, we're not gonna read the whole letter, but their findings?
You would be added as findings, yes.
Just add all the findings?
It's just findings. His report is just findings.
Include? Here, can you use yours?
And we want to add on to that motion from TKDA dated July 15, 2019, the findings that they noted in that letter. The findings are... Would I number them off? The excavation permit, one through two. Interim use permit, number three. And three, four, five, and six, and the miscellaneous is seven, eight, and nine. Having read that and put it in the motion, we'll re-vote on this again. Do we have to vote again?
Yeah.
Have to have it seconded?
No, but you'd ask your secondor if she would include that in her.
Would you include that?
I'll second that.
Okay. It's second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
This one?
Hearing none? We'll pass this on to the city council.
Do you have to, wasn't that just in the variance?
That's just on the variance. You have to also, in light of the denial of the variance, you must then, by matter of order, then deny, and if you look further on the staff recommendation, then you have to deny the interim use permit and the excavation permit.
I thought we did all three of them at one time. But I can go through it again.
I was just gonna say, if that was your motion to include all three, then you can do that.
Did I say that?
You had read just the variance statement, not the interim use one, so that was why I was making sure there was intent to include that as well.
So as a matter of order, make a second motion for the interim use and the excavation permit. And on page A12, I believe it's A12, there's also a motion there that Jake has outlined, or the city attorney.
On which one? Eight.
I'm thinking it's A12. It could be A22, too.
I don't have that paper, where is it?
Which packet, which packet was it in?
Yeah, I don't know.
Which packet was that in?
It's in the additions.
It's in this one.
With the pool cover on the front.
Yeah.
Oh, that new addition?
This one, I think it's in there. So that is...
Okay.
Now you have to add the variance.
We did the variance, correct?
You did.
Now we'll go to the...
So the second one's gonna be the interim use permit and excavation permit.
The interim use permit findings. So how do I state this?
So in this particular case, the second motion would be for the interim use permit and the excavation permit.
Okay.
And the staff recommendation was that the, the staff recommends that the planning commission and city council adopt above findings and deny the application for the interim use permit for ninety days to allow mineral extraction for the property to include the denial of the excavation permit. Or you can add the excavation permit at the beginning, it doesn't matter. The verbiage doesn't include it, but you have to make a motion for the excavation permit also.
Okay, so everybody understands that? We're gonna talk about the mineral extracts standards, and make a motion that we deny that, and to interim use permit for mineral extractions? And the IUP, am I right? To deny that.
Yeah.
Okay, all those, do you want to second that?
I'll second that, yeah.
Second, okay. Now we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, it'll go on to the city council. We'll go to, next thing on the agenda, number ten, is public hearing and discussion on Chapter Eight subdivision road specification ordinance amendments. So on this one, Elizabeth, on the chapter eight subdivision road specifications, do we just have a discussion on this, or just approve it?
First, we have to have a public hearing.
Oh, a public hearing on this one, too?
Yes.
How'd you sneak that one? Oh, it says public hearing.
Yes, it does.
Rochelle, you wanna read the public notice?
Yep. City of Columbus, public hearing notice, Chapter Eight subdivision text amendment. Notice is hereby given that the Columbus Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 17, 2019, at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as parties may be heard in the city hall located at 16319 Kettle River Boulevard, Columbus, Minnesota, to consider an amendment to Chapter Eight standard road specifications, Appendix A for new roadway construction. A copy of the proposed changes can be requested at the city offices or viewed on the city website. The hearing shall continue until all evidence and testimony has been received. Signed, Elizabeth Marsco, zoning administrator.
Thank you, Rochelle.
In your packet tonight, you have a memo from our city attorney indicating that there are some revisions to the road specifications that have been looked at by our city engineer and our public superintendent. The changes are as indicated on pages 25 and 26, and the ordinance that we would be looking at adopting, and these again are some amendments to road specifications, would be ordinance 1903. The way it was explained to me was that we have developers who are developing... The way it was explained to me was that we have developers who are developing roads, and the, the gravel base is not as good as some of the other roads that we have. In other words, we put, on our gravel roads, we have, we put gravel on year after year, and so when we do a shape and pave, it's a very good base, and it's a sturdy base, and we, and we put asphalt over it. And they felt that the standards today for a developer, the gravel base was not as, I don't want to use sturdy, because that's probably not a, a technical term, but, you know what I mean, as, as lasting over time, it wasn't as good a base as the gravel roads. And so they wanted to increase the, the specs, and this ordinance reflects that. And both Jim and the city engineer feel it's appropriate at this time, because the roads that are, the developers are constructing are not lasting as long as the other roads that we have today with, when we do the shape and pave.
And this is just bringing our ordinance into line with MinDOT's standards, so that we meet those, those criteria?
Correct. This is, this is, you know, bringing, bringing the base to the, where they feel it's appropriate, and then also using the appropriate mixture.
So that's what it means by moving it from the gravel base of four inches, five is replaced with six inch gravel base?
Yes.
So we have to open this up to the public?
You do.
Anybody have any, so who do we question? Well, you just explained it to us. So we'll open this up to the public. Don't want to read it again. We are going to open up a public hearing to everybody, and anyone who has any interest in this matter can step forward and present testimony as evidence in support of their position. Does anybody would like to talk about roads? You can line up right over here. Okay. Okay, nobody's responding, so we'll close the public hearing. We'll have a discussion among the members up here.
I have no...
Barb?
I'm gonna go with the power to be on this one. They know about it, I don't.
Barb?
I think it's self-evident.
Okay. Jody?
I just, just referencing Dan Mike, because he does do dirt moving. Does this seem real?
It increases gravel base on the developer.
So that's realistic, right? Okay. He's in the field, so I just thought we'd add.
I thought he was in the audience.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, having no discussion on it, we'll take a vote. All those, do we have to make a motion on this?
Motion.
You would make a recommendation to adopt the ordinance?
Yep.
To the council for adoption.
You want to do it?
Sure. I would make a recommendation that we, the planning commission, send forward to the city council, the ordinance, chapter eight, appendix A, summary of revisions, and I believe it's 1903, is that it?
Yep.
For approval.
I'll second that.
We'll take a vote on it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, it'll go on to the city council. We'll go to agenda number 11, the motion, Hager Park land disposal. I got a question about this one. How come they don't return it back? I know the owner's passed away, but did they offer it? Sale to the family first, or?
You know, I think in, in this case, the council hasn't given us direction, but I think that would be probably a direction that they would give to us. This particular property, I believe, came through a tax forfeiture, and after 30 years, it does revert to the city. And in this particular case, the park, park board made a recommendation to dispose of this particular land, because they didn't see in the near future, or in the far future, improving the park, and so they recommended disposal.
I'm kind of confused on that. So you think it was a tax forfeiture in the beginning, and not a donation?
I'd have to, I'd, I'd have to look at the date again, but it did not, the fact, the fact that we got a deed for it does not lead me to believe that it was Parkman dedication. But again, I wasn't here 30 years ago, when it was, you know what I mean, when the subdivision actually took place. Maybe family members would, would be able to, you know what I mean, shed more light on that. But in this particular case, the statute says after 30 years, it reverts to city ownership, and then they have the right to dispose of it.
It calls it donated land, so.
Dedicated?
Yes.
Dedicated. Is there a reason why it wouldn't just go back to the family? I mean, the family still owns the property. I mean, it's younger family members, but is there a reason why it wouldn't just go back to them?
The park, the park is owned by the city. So if you look at the, at the map, the, today, the, the property is owned by the city, and so at this point, the city can certainly entertain offers and take it to consideration, you know what I mean, if it's, you know, family members, or if they come in and indicate, you know what I mean, what they feel the facts at that time were, you know what I mean, at that time? Because I don't, I don't know what the facts are from that time. But today, the city owns the property, and the way that, way statute lays it out, as far as disposal goes, the park board has to make a decision as to whether they're going to approve the park or not. It goes to the council. The council directs it to the planning commission. The planning commission makes a finding that, in the comprehensive plan, that it is deemed rural residential and not in public ownership, and the comprehensive plan for the 2040 plan has been changed to designate it as rural residential, so we're able to sell it. And that's the finding that the planning commission makes.
But we can't rule under 2040 plan, because it hasn't been adopted by, by the council yet, right?
It's, it's a guidance, and you have already recommended that would be the guidance.
Okay.
Any other discussion on this? Chris?
No.
Pam?
No.
Barb? Jody?
No.
Make a motion? I'll make a motion to report to the city council that the sale of parcel 03-32-22-34-0006 as rural residential is consistent with Columbus 2040 comprehensive plan.
I'll second that.
And that said, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, it'll go on to the city council. Item number 12, discussion of future mixed-use zoning district draft recommendations.
Good evening. We, this is, I think, the third discussion we've had with the planning commission about this topic. This is, each conversation building on the previous one. What you have today is sort of the, the next stage in moving closer towards having an adoptable ordinance amendment. At this point, still, we're, I think we've talked about, talked about with staff, that this isn't in the form of amendment introduction, it is sort of the elements that will need to be approved to be built out of it, and so there is still a step that would need to be just turned into. But based on our conversation in the past couple meetings, and sort of the discussion like last time about what the planning commission would like to see in these districts, what would be, what are desirable features of the development in the area, we have some recommendations here that sort of reflect that, my understanding of that conversation. So the intent today is sort of to go through this presentation, which is basically a summary piece of the staff report you received, which is in your packet, to walk through a series of questions, and hopefully get some clarity and some decisions about this. This is written in the form of a recommended approach, but of course, it's, it's also completely flexible. If you see something here that's suggested, and you think, that doesn't sound right, it's time to change or suggest something different. We have based these again on sort of precedence in other communities with similar styles of development, but as, as you know from any, looking at any zoning ordinances, there's a lot of variability in terms of the level of detail and strictness and, and guidance. I can tell you, the approach we tried here was, tried to have a balanced approach. It is not the, there are zoning ordinances that are a lot more strict, that, that regulate every little detail, and they are a little bit harder to administer, because, because they're restrictive. But on the other hand, your current ordinance is, is pretty loose in some of these standards, so it is more, it's, it's a little more strict, a little more elevated than what's in there right now, in terms of some design criteria particularly. So I won't talk about that without sort of getting to the details here in a bit, so there's not too much uncertainty. I did want to say that this, that the focus here, this includes both high density, the low, medium, and high density categories. My sense is, we're focusing more on the high density in the near term, but it's all in here, so we can think of that as, as one big approach. So again, today's meeting is really focused on going through the elements and recommendations, and making decisions on the new zoning district. And I, I would imagine this, this is sort of, I think you had this discussion with the billboards a little while ago, that seemed to work well, which does this a series of questions, and the sort of responses to the questions. So my thought was to go through each one in turn, and you can, let me know if you want to talk about those pieces, or if it sounds okay as is. Does that seem like a good approach, just sort of walking through them by chunk by chunk? And some of this isn't brand new, because we've talked about it in the past, it should look a little bit familiar if you've been reading the materials, though I have added more content, more detail. The first comment is just sort of, and again, if, this follows also sort of the format and the outline for your other districts, so this will look, your code will be structured similarly, this won't be completely out of the style, so hopefully it, it would fit in well once added in. The first question was just how you describe the purpose of the districts, and I think it's a pretty straightforward description. It just describes it as an area that, encouraging the development, that includes a mix of different uses in the area. It's encouraged, but not required. These districts still can be single-use districts, there's not, at least, the way it's proposed here doesn't say it's mandated. You could mandate it, but the way it is now gives, gives your developer the flexibility to have any or all mix of uses that are, are within the use table. They're intended to apply to areas guided for development, generally speaking. We're imagining these are for, this is not for an area that you already have in the city that's pretty much done. It's, we're expecting the area, these areas to, to transition over time and to have new development, and, and varying degrees of intensification, so. Does that seem, from what we, we talked about, why, why the mixed use is here, does that, feel like that captures the ideas? Is there anything that, that doesn't make sense, or is not clear from that definition?
So this kind of aids us in stepping away from the overlays, and giving us some flexibility still?
Yes.
By defining our incremental uses.
Yes. This, this, we, going to the different pieces that will have to be taken account with that, this would effectively take away the overlay districts, and I probably more or less replace it suburban residential. It's, in some ways, a simpler format, because you don't have layers upon layers. This is a guidance, this is a base zoning for the, the properties that were identified in the comp plan as mixed use. It's, it's not a sort of guessing whether or not it applies, this is what it applies, and of course, there are standards, but it's not, it doesn't sit, there's no other layer underneath this one, at least as the way it's written, so. Keep going. Any other questions about the definition or approach? The why?
Nope.
I say, you, you could have in the purpose saying to get rid of it, but that would seem like, after a while, that would be very dated to have something in the code that says, is to replace it, so I think it might be better just to have that in the write-up. So these district densities, these aren't really for discussion in any, well, I guess we come, but they, they're, these are what are in the draft comp plan right now, which, in case you wonder about the status, that the Met Council is, is reading it right now and reviewing it, and it's in the midst of that process. Again, the, the ideas of our low district density, which is 1 to 3 units per acre, which is quite low, the idea of a, a sort of a rural-style mixed use, there's a picture here of a more modernist interpretation, though often it'll look like a house in a barn, or just a house. Medium density, which is along the lines of townhomes, or small-scale apartment buildings, duplexes, patio homes. Our high density, which is, depending on your preference, four to six, up to four to six stories of more apartments or condo-style development. These are just pictures of the different areas. Do we, we don't have one of those. Does this work? Really, the area we're talking about here is, this is the city limits with, and lakes, Lake Drive, this is the low-density sort of area, right behind the man cave area, and currently, a sort of a mix of, mostly single-family residential back there. This would provide some flexibility to property owners to have a different mix of uses besides just commercial industrial, which is what it's owned for right now. And the other areas, the medium-density district is sort of along Zurich, kind of this area up here. Am I looking at that right? Yep, this area. Matching here. And high density is, is down here, and right at the interchange up here. So that's, these are, again, the designations you're looking at here are straight from your comprehensive plan, so the intent with the zoning would be more or less matching So that's a, that's just a description of where it is, and what would be on the, the areas that we showed on the zoning map. Next question would be sort of, what permitted use should be allowed in each district? And if you look at your staff report, because we thought it just made sense as a starting place, we looked at the, the zoning that's in place now, and said, not so much a brand-new list, but saying, starting with the list right now, what would you change about what's allowed in this area to make it, to reflect this new district? Of course, the big change is adding residential as a permitted use, or conditional use, depending on how you would like to structure it. The tables here, I just put, I added in, starting on page two of the staff report, these different, different uses that are allowed in your district, and the assumption being that many of them would be allowed, would stay, could be, continue to stay in the district, but you would be adding residential. The way this is structured now, as far as permitted uses, it's not recommending any changes to what's allowed there now. We can go really quickly through what that is, if that's helpful. This would be an opportunity to say, well, if you're adding residential, maybe we shouldn't have these other uses. But as far as, as a starting place, the idea was, maybe these could be compatible. For instance, in the low-density district, compatible, the district permits, the permitted use would be agricultural, daycares, parking, trails, head trails, storage buildings, accessory structures, and municipal buildings. Those all seemed like they could be compatible with residential, is from our perspective. I mean, I don't know if there's any different thoughts about that. Should I just keep going?
No, I think we need to talk about that a little bit.
Yes.
And we're talking about the low-density, right?
Yes.
So at what acreage are we talking at that? You're saying 1 to 3 units per acre?
Up to, one, up to 1 to 3 units per acre.
So we're not at, we're not at 5 acre minimum, then?
No.
Because this is in the, this is in the commercial districts.
Oh, just in the commercial districts? Okay, then why would we have agriculture in our commercial district?
It's in there right now.
Yeah, that's where she started. This is what's in there today.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Okay.
And if it's, if it's not a good idea, we can take it out. But it's, it started with what's allowed right now in those districts.
Right. Right. Do we have agriculture use in our commercial districts as far as, like what, like chickens? Or, I mean?
I'm trying to pinpoint it, that's why I understand.
So, I mean, at one point, you, you did, you had the Waldock Farm, you know what I mean, but things are changing. You know, so you could take it out, you know what I mean, and say, you know, it's, it's developing, it's commercial, we're trying to get, you know, we're trying to move in, you know, into, in the direction of a more densely area with commercial, and, and maybe agricultural uses?
Aren't suited there.
Aren't, aren't, aren't suited anymore.
What does everybody else in the aisle think?
We're talking down by the old Waldock implements and stuff like that. That's the district we're talking about, down on Lake Drive.
This is the Lake Drive.
This is the CI district.
Down by the man caves and that.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think agriculture's going to be in there anymore.
Is it just removing that, then?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. That makes sense to me. I didn't take it out initially because the first, the question I was just asking was, is it, does the residential, is it incompatible residential? The answer might be no to that, but is it incompatible with a vision for commercial industrial in the area? Quite likely yes. So that could be taken out of the district. Anything else here that gives you pause in terms of this area? This is just, I should just, this is just permitted uses. There's also a list for conditional. We haven't gotten to that yet. So it's, if you're thinking something's missing, it is. Okay. And then adding the uses that would be added to this district, just to allow single family, two family, attached residential, limited to eight or less for building, and mixed use dwelling districts, dwelling units, which would be a.
And this would just, this is just for the.
Low density.
One area.
Yes.
Not all along Lake Drive, just the one area.
Just.
Just that little brown area.
This is just that tiny little.
Just this area.
The man cave deal.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Where there's already houses.
Yeah.
Right.
People who had single family homes there now, it would now be allowed.
And there's, there's a two family attached dwelling there also.
So. Okay. Can I keep going?
Yep.
The next, I did, I guess I could have done it by different areas, but the next list in this permitted uses is for the medium and high. And there certainly can be, I didn't separate them out because I didn't know if we had a really good reason to have a different list for those two, because it's more a level of intensity than it is difference in style. So, but that could be part of the discussion as well. This is what's permitted right now, I should say, in the CR district in your, so, which is currently, at least some of this, not 100% of the land, but some of your land in your, in, oops, wrong button, in your, in this area is in this district right now. So what's allowed there now, which could continue to be as part of a mixed use district, indoor sales and storage for a variety of different uses, bakeries, drugstores, fitness centers, hotels, theaters, offices, gas, auto service and repair, daycare, art galleries, dry cleaners, vet clinics without boarding, parking structures, existing single family, your ordinance kind of has a statement that if it's been there for long-term, it can keep being there even though you wouldn't really add any new ones, and municipal buildings. So these are all uses that could exist in a mixed use district. But again, it's your opportunity to say, is there anything here that you think, well, maybe not so much anymore?
I highlight, do you have on the indoor automotive service and repair?
Yes.
It says with no outdoor storage or overnight parking, it's not possible for a repair place not to have outdoor, some type of outdoor store.
Yeah.
Parking. I don't know how that would fit in there. I mean, their building would have to be enormous.
This is from your ordinance.
Yeah, this is more, this was, this was written for the Jiffy Lube and the more of a tire place and where there's, this is really, this was really surrounding the commercial retail. This wasn't used car sales or new car sales. Because actually, I'm trying to think, I think we distinguish between used car sales and new car sales. And used cars serviced and sales are not allowed in this district, but they were allowed in the CI district. You only had new car sales in the CR district, if I recall, right when we drafted this, because we said that the two districts weren't going to compete against each other. But where this came from was, and I don't remember, I don't know if you remember, Jody, but several years ago, prior to Muddy Paws, was, it was a tire place. And there was no outdoor storage. They just, they just sold tires. Was it a one tire?
Okay. So it's more like retail?
It was more, it was, that was the idea of what this use was. It was more of a Jiffy Lube and a more of those type of things where people bring their car in and they take it out. It's a 10 minute or 20 minute or, I don't even know how long they, you leave your car there, but.
Not major repair shop.
It wasn't, it wasn't a major repair shop.
And that's not the intent of this, is to have, and I see where you're going.
And I think, I think, Hala, if there's another word for that, then that was the intent of what that was.
Yes. Yeah, it's, I mean, that makes sense. And I would, there, I think there's some, yeah, we'll get to the conditional and uses later, where they, they talk about the sort of the flip side of that, but. So are there concerns about it staying this way? I mean, you're adding residential. I wouldn't think you'd want a more intensive residential repair use in a district with homes as opposed to a district without homes, but. Any thoughts on that? Well, there's a lot more pieces to go, so maybe we can keep going. We can just put a note by that and see if anyone wants to revisit that and maybe we'll just keep going, because there is also another conditional use section. And just really the only addition in that district, at least as permitted uses, would be attached residential dwellings, which are consistent with, the attached residential dwellings language is consistently how your code refers to multifamily housing, so it's meant to be considerate, consistent with that. Okay. So just going to talk about conditional uses. Suggested here are a couple additions, or subtractions, and you can, again, agree or disagree with these. The conditional use, as mentioned in your MOI, started again with the low density. This is a place where I had some suggestions of things that you may want to consider pulling out, just because they might, they just may be considered, some codes consider them less compatible with residential. But again, your code, your, your guidance, so please weigh in. The suggested that uses like, again, under conditional uses for the low density district, trade or contractor offices, daycare, light manufacturing or processing.
Hala, I just need to stop for one. This is the CI district, not the CR district.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm switching back and forth between them, which I'm realizing maybe is a little confusing.
In this one, though, it does say CR. I just want to make sure everybody knows that it's CI.
Did I? Sorry. Typo. This is CI. Yes.
So again, we're going back to Lake Drive where man caves in that area.
Yes. Apologies for that typo there. This is back on the low density area, the conditional uses. The list here has several, maybe I'll skip to the ones that I considered that you may, might want to think about not including, but again, up to your thoughts. In terms of communication towers, lumberyards, gas stations, greenhouses and nurseries with retail sales, implement and recreational vehicle sales and service, and used auto sales and adult uses. These are often not in mixed use districts, just because they have more outdoor storage, more sort of activities that could be disruptive to someone living on the property. I mean, you don't have to, you could keep them all in, but it was just a start to think about some possible ones that might not be compatible. So any thoughts about any of those, whether that makes sense or you think, hey, we could keep those?
Why would you remove gasoline sales in accessory convenience stores?
I guess the thought would be if it was a residential property, that's a lot of coming and going. And there's also, you have to have gas tanks on property and access.
Lights, they say, open late.
Yeah. A lot, the ambient light from the canopy. I mean, you can disagree for sure, but that was, that was the thinking at least. I don't know, are there many, are there any gas stations along that corridor right now? I don't, can't picture any.
No. Or not. There used to be, but not today. Muzzy Mart, I think it was.
How long ago?
Wasn't it Muzzy Mart or something like that down there? Grocery store?
That's.
Where's, sorry.
Where are the old?
Wasn't it something like that down there? Wasn't it Muzzy Mart down there or something like that down there for gasoline and groceries? Yeah, NASCAR dealership.
Would you like to keep gas stations in? Was that the thinking?
Not me.
Yeah, no. Okay.
We got too many gas stations.
So what I'm thinking about lumberyards, backup beepers, I mean, I'm trying to think of all the things that we get complaints about. In lumberyards, you got, you know, forklifts and everything else with, all day long. And so, those are the type of things that you tend to annoy people who are living there.
Are there any other uses here that you've gotten complaints about, you think, or?
I want to retract my gas station thing. I think gas stations should be by the freeway more, so that's what I meant.
So we're, okay.
Most of them are.
Right. Right. There's a reason.
Since we have a lot of ground to cover, I'll keep talking, keep going unless there's questions or comments about these.
So are those, were those staying in or out for the lumberyards, communication towers, and gasoline stations? Again, we're talking about the low mixed use.
I'd say out.
It's, oh, I mean, I agree with the Red Wolf District in that specific district.
Hala, consensus that those three are out?
Okay. Keep those three out. Go ahead, keep, maybe just go down the list. How about greenhouses, nurseries, and implement and recreational vehicle sales? Again, maybe they're less intensive, but.
I agree with that as well.
I agree.
Last two were used car sales and adult uses.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep. Taking those out. All right. Keep going. Next section is more conditional uses. I think it accidentally says permitted, but I meant conditional and community retail. I, there's a couple cut and paste errors there, my apologies. This is for, this is community retail, this is community retail district. This is back in the freeway area and looking again at the community retail as the base district here. These are conditional uses in that district right now. And they're not that many, and they might all be fine unless people have concerns about public service facilities, mortuaries, domestic vet, vet offices that do board animals, have kennels, I guess, and senior citizen housing, which you have as a separate category, and presumably that would stay.
Could you really picture a mortuary in that, in that area, really? I mean, I couldn't, but I can't really, oh, you could.
Would you like to take them out? I mean, I don't, maybe it's not the right location for it, but.
Where else would you put one?
I don't know. I was thinking the same thing, but I don't know, I just don't picture it there, but.
They are allowed along, well, the conditional uses in both of these districts right now, so you could put them along.
As far as Lake has one right over by the post office and Wells Fargo.
The post office.
Yeah, they got Robert's there, and then they got Matt's.
You don't notice it because it's a very nice looking building, you know, with the parking lot.
And then there's the repair shop right next to it.
Yeah. I know. So it does fit in, you know? I mean, it's.
They're kind of quiet places.
Really? But there really is.
This is as long as they don't start the oven up.
But there isn't any apartment buildings right there.
Huh?
I mean, across the.
There's homes there.
Yeah.
Across the path there is.
Right, right.
It's really nicely landscaped and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Greenhouse is made.
Okay.
Yeah. It's quiet, like you said. It's quiet.
Yeah.
Nobody can just build up around it.
Yeah. So they're in as long as, I mean, I'm sure they meet, have to meet all kinds of standards for.
Right.
Not being offensive. Anyway. I had a couple suggested adds to the conditional uses, and these are just based on what's been done in other similar mixed use districts. The first was, and this actually could be more than one category, but breweries, micro distilleries, or taprooms. I'm not sure if you've had a discussion about that in the city before, but I know that some cities are, find those as attractive places for people to gather and have a drink and have something to eat. That could be part of the mix. I don't, that's, is it opening a can of worms to suggest it as a new use? I don't know if it, if you hadn't had a, have you had any discussions about that in the past, if that's anything the cities like to see? It could be something to think about. And the other would be assisted living facilities. You already have senior citizen housing and it might be kind of in there already, but it might be good to make sure it's clear, too. So. Any thoughts about either of those being potential?
Well, the taprooms and breweries have become quite popular.
Yes.
So I don't have a problem with them.
Neither do I. Hammer Heart does fine down there if there's not complaints.
It's quiet.
Yep.
Very nice taxes to Lino.
Yep. I think assisted living facilities right next to them would be a.
Yeah.
It's where I want to go.
That's the place to retire.
Walk home.
Just kind of moving down the channel.
Yep.
Take it nice and easy.
Don't sign me up.
Yeah, that way, right? Nice and easy.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay with those?
Yep.
Preferably together.
It's a mixed use, it's both.
One on top of the other.
Elevator down.
Depends on how far you can walk right now. The mortuary at the end.
Better not have one of those electric wheelchairs.
Cover some ground.
A life cycle housing. Okay. That kind of is the end of this use section. Was there any, in terms of, I mean, not that you have to have it all in your head at this one time, if there's any uses that have come up in the past or possibilities that were not part of this initial list? I mean, we haven't got to the interim use section, but that's sort of a different type of category, but of elements that you would think be part of here that, your codes are pretty broad already in terms of covering like a pretty wide range of commercial uses, but I don't know, has there been anything that's come up in the past that you thought, well, you know, it would be nice if we allowed that, or we shouldn't allow that? Maybe not?
Not in the commercial retail district.
Okay.
The only thing that came up in a different district was more of a campus style manufacturing kind of, you know what I mean, facility where you have, it's all in one building, and I don't even know what you call that, but I think that's more in a different district than the commercial retail district.
Is there, but there's not really, there's not really, this doesn't really fit in any of these proposed mixed use districts. You're thinking it's just something that.
I don't think it belongs in this one. It belongs probably in the commercial showroom or.
Okay.
Or whatever we're going to name the next district.
Okay. So to make, just make a note that that could be in a separate, we're not, separate district discussion, campus style manufacturing facility. Anything else, anything you've seen in other communities or wondered about? Obviously, this isn't final, so there's room to add later, but. Okay, great. The next section, unless there's any questions about that one, is sort of focused on the design standards. And this goes more back to the topic we had last time, we focused on last time with all the different examples of development. I've added a few here from communities in the Twin Cities area. I don't know if I remember which one's which, but a lot of them have been built in recent years and are sort of examples, the type of developments we talked about. We also still have the presentation from last time, so if there were examples, you remember from last time, we want to pull up. The idea is not so much to say it's exactly for this, you need exactly this one type of building, but these, these types of properties, and I have another page, too, of more examples, kind of embody some of the concepts that are talked about in these design standards. So if we want to, we can go back and forth and sort of look at examples if we want to think about what that is. And while these are sort of a higher density, I also have some examples here of sort of a lower scale, that might be more the medium mixed use district. These are more sort of townhome model. So some, just some different ideas here of what, of what might be appealing or might work well here. So if, when we were talking about this. So if, when we were talking about this, I can refer to these different areas if we want to think about how this, how, what this looks like in, in practice, so. No further ado, I may be able to just jump in, and, you know, since these are focused on the mixed-use and high, higher-density ones, maybe we'll start with that, and we can go back into low-density afterwards, so around page seven. The existing district standards are listed at the top of this page. This is what's in your code right now for the CR district. It's not particularly extensive, but it basically just suggests compatibility. It, brick is called out as a primary material here. Landscaping is described sort of as the elements of it without a lot of detail in terms of what's, how they're organized or how they work together. And there's some, I don't know, some general language about design standards, but not, that refers to compatibility, which is a little tricky when you have nothing nearby it, so I, it's a little bit harder to measure what compatibility looks like in that context. So below here are some additional standards that could be added and sort of have come out of discussions and looking at other codes, so I thought we could just go through these and see if these are kind of, as we, as we had that conversation last time, and you're sort of picturing what you'd like to see, if these kind of interpret that and could be a way to sort of bolster what you have in there already and describe what this looks like, so. So I've, because there's a number of them, there's a group by categories, maybe we'll just go through each one and pause. The first one is, is really about the site design, the layout of the site, and, and as we're, as we've talked about in the, the development proposal we have pending, and other ones where you have a larger site with multiple pieces. This is about how the buildings relate to the street and how they relate to one another. And this is about sort of, again, if there are existing buildings, making sure that the orientation and consolidation of structures complements the proposed development so that it feels like it's part of a larger whole and cohesive, and it doesn't feel like a bunch of disconnected pieces. Some of these are kind of obvious in some ways, but again, it's good to have it in language sometimes so that you can have something to point to. Site planning should, again, reflect the relationship to the street. If there's frontage on the street, and a lot of these, these projects show that you're not, you're, you're facing along the street, you're not at some kind of odd weird angle, so that when you're driving by, you have a pleasing sense of arrival when the buildings along the front. We have setbacks here, so some of these are shown are kind of up against the street, which I guess you could vary and allow. I, I can't imagine that all of your development's going to be right on an active street, but at very least it would be oriented angle that way, so it just feels like you're entering a place. And also the idea is, as, as buildings are built along sort of a street, along a road, that there's some continuity to how it's done, so it's not, things aren't at odd angles, or sort of a consistency and continuity to how the buildings face the street, so. Any questions or thoughts about those? That's, that just helps when you're having conversations about the layout of the site and are the buildings in the right relationship to one another and to the street. Of course, they're written soft enough that you could vary, that it's not going to need to a specific parameter. Thoughts about those? Does that, does that seem reasonable?
They seem reasonable, yeah.
Next one's more about the building design, and this, these are quite a few here, but again, this relates to sort of a lot of the pieces that we talked about last time in terms of what's, what makes a desire, what makes an appealing-looking building a desirable-looking building. So hopefully they're, again, with enough flexibility that your developer and your, and your architects can, can bring their own good ideas, too. Buildings shall have a clearly defined pedestrian entrance at the street level. It doesn't say necessarily onto the street, but that there's, you arrive at the building and there's a good, well-defined entrance, it's not some weird little tucked-away piece. Most good building designs should have that anyway, but maybe it's good to call so you don't get some kind of oddball alignment. One thing we did talk about last time, and here, building facade should have some kind of articulation, and so that, that some codes talk about that every X number of feet, there's some kind of variation, so that you don't have just a giant flat wall with, that's all the same color and all the same feeling, that looks like a giant box. So use, every one of these designs shows, based on whatever their local code is, some variation of that. And the way this is written is to say, it could, it could be sort of these recesses or openings where you have, where it sort of dips in or sticks out, some kind of variation in the sort of, the depth of the wall. It could be in terms of materials, so that in some of these designs, you have, the material is changing along the front, and so it's not, I don't know, maybe these aren't the best examples. Am I looking here? And just to sort of, so some variation and tone and style, variation, or, or just details. I mean, and again, leaving, the way it's written here is leaving it a little bit open for interpretation of what that would be, but just, that it's not just one giant blank something, so. Any thoughts about that? I know we talked about that variation, does that feel like it captures it? Some codes are, this one says picks 50 feet, some codes say 30 feet, some say 40 feet. There's no like magic number, it's just meant to be enough that it's noticeable and visually appealing, so. Some codes, you can be as specific as saying the articulation has to be at least four feet in depth. I mean, it can get a lot more detailed than this if you wanted to, but again, this was meant to be, again, hopefully a balanced approach. Does that, thinking about that, thinking about the buildings that you like, and we also, of course, have that other document if you want to look at that.
There's another PowerPoint.
Another PowerPoint, if we wanted to pull that up, too, if anyone remembers anything from last time.
No, I like the idea of not having just a box and having some definition and changing, you know, 50 feet, 30 feet, I don't know if it's...
Well, and I think it gives developers at least a foothold to come in with a design that fits into what our, kind of our concept is, it looks good to me.
I hate to be that rigid.
Yeah, I mean, let them show us their plan based on kind of where we're...
And as you can see from other areas, this is, these are not, none of your, nothing you see here is really unusual or exotic in terms of codes. Not to say everybody's code has it, but there's a number of other examples that are similar, so hopefully it's nothing that's too surprising for the folks you're dealing with either.
Well, like you said, you left it a little open-ended, too, so that it's, we can have a little flexibility in there.
The next language talks about roof forms a bit. It just says manceter, mancetite roofs are not permitted except for mancetite cornices, and that's kind of the, call it the Pizza Hut roof, but... The, the, this call, we talked about last time about whether flat roofs are preferable. I mean, since there are some attractive different forms, you see the examples we have here, some flat roofs and a few pitched roof concepts, and corniced ones, which are kind of not, a little bit, yeah, it's more like, yeah. That one around the edges, just some different, different forms that are, that can be compatible, and again, it's meant to be a little bit flexible, so it's not saying every building looks the same, but hopefully a couple feeling different options.
When we, when we talked last week, we said that in the high-density area, that the planning commission preferred the flat roof because it was more of a commercial-type area, but if it was less than three stories and such, there would be more, you know what I mean, more apt, have more, you know, differences. So wouldn't it be, wouldn't you think that, and I'm, up to the planning commission, the planning commission would some say, we want flat roofs in the high-density areas, you know, the, the lower-density areas, you would allow this different type of, you know what I mean, styles in it? If you're going to, if you're going to do it consistently, we only have 20.33 acres in the high-density area in the one corner. Now, if you think, now you're thinking in the area that's by the Priner Preserve, Priner Preserve to the north, that, those are pitched roofs, and that is high-density. So I can see where you would want a little bit more flexibility there, because there's literally houses across the street that have pitched roofs, they're not flat. So that's your other area with high-density?
Well, and we kind of decided, too, to go with a flat roof going the six stories, did we not?
Because it was, because it was such a, the building was so high.
Right.
So is it, do we want to say it's based on height, then?
I think so, because I think we still want that flexibility for the developer to be able to choose preferences as far as what they want to design and what cost they want to go to.
And we need underground parking.
So flat for proper buildings over three stories? I mean, that's another thing, too, is thinking about if it's a two-story townhome, it, a lot more styles are pitched.
I mean, I've seen four-story apartments that have pitched roofs and that, and...
We would probably say five and up would be flat, because...
Five and up?
Yeah, because, yeah, we don't want to limit the developers that might want.
What's five?
They want to put up a three-story to have to put a flat roof on it.
Is, is five counting parking down below, or is it just...
Five stories.
Five being up, so if they decide to park...
They got to be above the ground to count?
Your code currently has heights like...
50 feet or...
Feet, in feet, so you could just specify by feet, whatever the nearest feet is. We'll, we'll get to that one, too, there's some thoughts about, because currently you don't allow five stories, unless they're very flat. So, okay, we can say that these are, these options, except in the case of four or more stories, or whatever the equivalent is in feet, or five, five or more stories?
Five or more, yes.
Five plus stories, then that's flat. Okay. Sounds good. Great, any other thoughts about roofs? Turns out there's a lot of building pieces. There's a couple of things here that, that are about just the design of the building, and they're meant to be sort of, I don't know, generally descriptive of good, of good design, they're, they're not very prescriptive of a specific approach, but saying building top should be defined with architectural details, so just cornices, parapets, contrasting materials, or varied window or roof shapes. Again, just to give, these are just urban design concepts of a, as you can, a lot of these already do that, where they have, the, the roof line is a, the building doesn't feel like it just chops off, it has a, it has a top, and maybe that's a very basic way of saying it, but it's a, a nice little sort of finishing piece along the edge, and you can have a lot of different treatments, something fairly minimal or something more, not so much. Buildings do have a defined base, middle and top, employ elements that relate to the human scale and appeal to pedestrians, such as awnings, windows, or arcades, the idea being sort of there's, there's, again, it's not just a flat building, but has appealing elements to it. There's a top beam, it has, it's not, again, not a brick, but the medium, middle, top and bottom. Again, open to interpretation. Views in and out of the buildings will be provided to enlighten the streetscape, so that there's windows that are clear. I mean, some codes get very specific in this area, and there's some suggestions here in terms of, of the amount of glass you want to have. I don't know how specific you want to get with that, but the idea being that you don't have, at the street level, it isn't just a blank wall, that your, your first floor has at least some windows. Not so much that it's prohibitive for how the building's used, but enough that, as you can see with most of these buildings, there's, there's certainly a window requirement in place, oops, at your ground floor where it's, your, your ground floor isn't just the top half of parking or something like that, you have a, there's something appealing about walking by it that, that feels inviting and feels that, even if it's not like a retail use, it's, it's, it has a sort of a sense of that it's an appealing building. Of course, questions with retail, with ground-floor residential, a lot of times with apartments, if it's not mixed-use, you want to, there's going to be some kind of setback, or maybe people have, will have a little, if there's a ground-floor apartment unit, you'll have like a little courtyard or, or some kind of protective area so that you're not actually in a situation where you're walking up to someone's window and looking in, that's, there's more privacy involved, but this is meant to be, and there's some differences here in terms of having less, when there's, as this is written, there's a point about non-residential uses having more glass. If it's a residential on the ground floor, maybe you have less glass, just so that there is more opportunity for privacy, that people aren't living in a, you don't have a situation where it feels like people are living in a display window, so. There's some general guidelines here in terms of the percentage. You could certainly vary these if they felt, if for the building design it didn't work, but the point being just that it's, it's part of the appeal of it. And it says window and door openings, just making clear that the glass should be more or less clear, it's, it doesn't do much good to have a window if people use the blackout glass, it's just like a shiny black surface that you can't see into or out of, that's, I don't know, those aren't really windows, they're glass panels, so. This is certainly something I would imagine that you'd have discussions with developers about, they may very well have some different ideas or some explanations of why they can't do that. I know frequently they'll say, well, this corner is, that's our utility area, and there's no, there's no way we can do windows, and you could, we'd have to have a case-by-case discussion if there's places where you think you can't meet that requirement for a very good reason, and you wouldn't want windows into that. But this at least provides a baseline for that discussion to say where it's possible, where it makes sense, where the use on the other side is not invasive to who's ever there, it, it feels welcoming, and just looks better that way, so. That's the idea behind windows, I don't know if people have thoughts about that. Again, these numbers are consistent with other communities, but there's nothing magical about them either. And I'm just saying, most, most buildings that are, the newer ones do, seem to apply this type of requirement. Thoughts about windows or building design? I know this is a lot to take in, I know we, I'm not going to, that's another reason not to have this final decision today, because you might want to think about this a little while longer, too, so maybe I'll just keep going, because I don't want to keep you here too crazy late, and just stop me if there's anything you want to discuss. The next one is really closely related, building materials. We also had this discussion last time in terms of what are good building materials. Your code right now says brick, and there's nothing wrong with brick, you could keep saying that. The idea here was to introduce some other elements, that especially ones that you see in, in high-quality residential mixed-use buildings that are used in other communities, that might be sort of part of the assortment. I mean, as we talked about, this is, there's some things you don't want to see, like maybe cheap vinyl siding wouldn't be something you wouldn't want to see, but the idea of the use of the types of materials here, brick, glass, cement plaster or stucco, natural stone, I guess we have brick in there twice, architectural concrete, non-corrogated metal or equivalent or better. So the idea is, you have a such-as list, but then you have or equivalent or better, so that your developer comes and says, I have this fantastic durable material. There have been some new things that have been made in recent years that were not in current, so we can't always predict exactly what the next system will be, so saying, with the expectation being this is something durable, long-lasting, high-quality, it looks good, it wears well, and there's, and since a lot of these building designs, you're going to have more than one material, just to provide that interest and variety, that you have several different choices, too, so. The idea of, also, there's a, there's a section here for accent materials, and that's not defined too specifically, again, to allow the developer to, and designer to provide their own feedback. With some architectural treatments, and again, the idea being some other concepts for what that could be. And for all these building designs, you can see that in practice, where you have sort of the main materials, but then you also have sort of mater, lesser sort of accent elements that provide sort of a visual interest, or sort of articulation in your facade, so again, the idea being that you have a good selection of durable choices, and then they come to you with an idea of how that fits together and how it looks good.
So Hyla, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to wreck your whole presentation now, because I'm going to, I know we have about 20, 20 minutes or so. But, so the EDA did have a presentation last week, and so I wanted, I want to pass out, you know what I mean, the presentation to them, so you, so you saw what Hyla gave you, and you saw the samples that, you know what I mean, were there, so you, you have an idea of what materials and designs could be, and then I also want you to see what an actual presentation was that we, that we received, so you get to understand what we're going to be looking at in the future, so you can think about both when you're making your decision. So with that...
Do you need me to pull something up here to do?
Sorry?
Nope, I don't need this. Do you want, is there something to pull up here?
I don't, maybe if you look in the EDA, I might, I might want to... Okay, so what you're looking at, and you see these three gentlemen sitting right in the front row? Well, they're here for a reason, they are the ones who made the presentation, so. What you have before you is a concept plan for the northeast area, it's the very north end of Hornsby Street on the west side, so it's the very last piece before you get to Lionel Lake, or I'm sorry, Forest Lake, in the northeast quadrant, and so this is the concept as far as the layout, we all kind of looked at this, and we, we all think it looks like a hockey puck, no, I'm sorry, hockey stick, I'm not a hockey person. Hockey, hockey stick, there you go. And, and then there's, you know, I mean, the, the concept plan of the, of the different layouts, so there are studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and the, the concept that you see on the third page is the latest concept, the first concept was the one with the peaked roof, and after your discussion, two meetings ago, I think it was, or maybe it was one meeting ago, I had contacted the developers and said, listen, you know, they're looking at, you're looking at a higher building in height, and this is what the planning commission discussed, which was the flat roof, multiple, and, and they wanted some definition, not just a square, and so came back with the second design, which is the concept with the brown, white, and gray areas. So, the reason I give you this is to kind of give you an idea of what's being proposed, as, and then when you're making your design standards, knowing what a developer has put together, so you have something to compare and contrast of what you would like to see, or if there's something here that you like, you say, this is, this is what I like, or I don't like. I know Councilmember Doreen noticed that there was a Prius and an Audi in the parking lot.
That's a nice-looking building.
I think one of the things that we were at a little bit disadvantaged from the EDA perspective was, I know Phil, you had verbally told us what the materials were, the planning commission might not know what all the, your materials are, but.
That's later in my presentation.
Can you do anything with those patios? I mean, you're right out there in the sun, there's no, can, can they be designed, so, like, on the second page where you, they're kind of tucked in, so people can actually sit out there, I mean, you're going to be out in the sun, and they look very narrow, but they're really not that practical for being, you know, for somebody to go outside and enjoy their patio, whereas these seem kind of tucked in, you know, and you can see the shade, they're, they get shade. They just look a little more stable in this second drawing, you know, where they're actually part of the building. The ones on the second page kind of give you some idea of a little more privacy, you're not just hanging out there, you know. Excuse me, see everybody, you know, you want to sit there and read, or?
Is that typical now, these new cable balconies? Is that something new?
Can you bring out the project ones, the Janet's pictures? Do you have Janet's pictures?
Yeah.
Is that kind of a cost-efficient deal? When I say that, they build wooden decks, and then they're replacing them?
The, the pictures that are up on the, up on the screen are pictures that were taken, and this is the development that the same developer has done, except the development is in Blaine, and I believe that that development is two years old. Is similar? The, the materials that use, used on this building, is, are you planning to use similar materials on this one?
And what exactly is a hardy panel? What is it?
Fiber cement.
And how is it attached to the side of the building? Okay.
How wide are those, those decks? How far out do they go? Are they four feet out? So you could put a chair there. Now, that's nice there, they're kind of cove in.
Yeah, and you got privacy on the one wall, and?
So, you know how it drops off there? Is that just a flat roof up there? Can you use that for anything? I just, this one at Forest Lake, it's got a, like a, right, this, this one's got kind of like a, an outside deck for everybody to use, kind of, I mean, it's up on top of the roof. It's, yeah, and did you see that? That's kind of unique, I don't, they got chairs up there, I don't know if they got shuffleboard or what up there, but it is pretty unique when you see it, I mean, it's a unique building, anyway.
Here's some examples of those in the other building that they had done, the package room, here's the fitness center pool, the community room with the playroom, then the office space I think you were mentioning.
Mr. Chair, can I ask Elizabeth a question?
Yeah.
What did the EDA think of the seventy feet? For the high density?
For the, for the height, they were, they were okay with the height.
Okay.
I was gonna, sorry if I can say that, we were going to get to the heights discussion a little bit later on, and then there were some suggestions for potential heights in here, the, the placeholder in this document was just fifty, because that was about where we started last time, but as we talked about last time, it seems like there was an interest in being higher.
And is everybody in agreement with the additional building materials that they stated would be included in this?
No, because we kind of talked about hardy board being included in it the last time.
And the three were against?
Oh, oh, they, where did they get?
You know, Phil, looking at that area, I know that it was the least brought to my attention that that building, the building that was in Blaine was only two years old, and some of the pictures are already just sort of rippling in the hardy board, and there was some concern that the hardy board that was used, we may, you know what I mean, we may require a higher density, or a higher, you know what I mean, quality hardy board. The building official just went on vacation, so I didn't have a chance to ask him about, you know, the grades, or what, there, there might be differences, I don't, I don't know the difference between hardy boards, but there must be some different denominations of them.
I was gonna say, this is one of the reasons we have, we're, we can add, we can certainly have a discussion if there's the desire to add more categories, but there, it seems that there does always need to be an or equivalent or better language, because their manufacturers are coming up with better and new treatments frequently, and been an awful lot of meetings where they're bringing samples of something, or making a case for something new and improved, and I think that it's a great idea for the code folks to look into that, because they see that in practice and in use, and if you have examples of what this looks like five, ten years down the road, that's, that's helpful, too.
I think also that for the planning commission, I think we have to look at, so the other buildings that are in the district, so whether you, and I don't know whether you look at, you're just looking at the northeast area, or when Hila was talking about the area, you know what I mean, I don't know, when you look at the northeast area, do you compare that against, you know, the bridge, the, the Holiday, Running Aces, I mean, when you look at the area, do you consider the freeway district an entire area, or do you look at it as the northeast, you know, south, you know what I mean, where you have difference? The reason why I bring this up is, we require, you know, Holiday is a hundred percent brick, I mean, our standard was brick, and so buildings that were built are primarily brick, when you look at, you know, Running Aces, and I know there's probably some elements of ephes and, and stucco and whatever, but the idea was that it looked like brick or stucco in that building, and, and Gander Mountain was all brick, so, or, or masonry, rather, so, when, when Phil was talking about, you know what I mean, percentages and such, so, I'm not sure what, being that our, our standard, as Hila said, was, it was a hundred percent masonry brick, I think is what it said, you know, you have to think about everyone, everyone, it's going to be uniform, so we have to apply it to across the board, so it's not just this, this apartment building, but it's the design standard for the CR district, as it stands, so. So, I'm not, I, I, I get this all the time, what, you know what I mean, about the, about the materials, and, and right now, we say this district is brick, and this, and the commercial showroom is more tip-up panels and different types of materials, which is your stone face, and aggregate, and all of those sorts of surfaces. I kind of like the, you know what I mean, the, the multi-dimension, it seems that this is the more modern look, where you have the different colors and the different faces, and whether it's, you know, limestone, or the stacked, the stacked, I think, I think they're, I'm not even sure what they're called, but in Forest Lake, the apartment building has it on, it's the long limestone, but it's not limestone, it's fake brick. It would be nice if you could give a percentage, because that gives a really good guideline, like seventy-five percent should be some sort of masonry brick, twenty-five percent could be other type of materials, meaning glass, hardy board, whatever, it, it just gives them a better idea of what you want.
Do you know what Running Aces Hotel is gonna, what the exterior is?
You know what? I.
Don't you think it could kind of follow in that?
I don't, I actually don't remember the mix of it, but the color scheme is very similar to this. And you know, they're changing the face of the racetrack to match it. You know what I mean? So it's going to be one type. And I'd have to look that up. I don't remember.
Might be an idea to look at. You know, kind of incorporate the same scheme of design, exterior design. But I don't know what it is, so...
That's a good question you asked. So do we consider that part of the other? Or is it like a little city of its own over there? I don't know. I look at it, it's kind of on its own. It's across the freeway, it's...
But don't you think you want more unity? Because, you know, we're a little, little town.
I know unity, but it's like, where is the town? You tell me where our town is. It's all over.
Well, but it's mostly residential, but that's going to be the kind of the focal point of our town.
Right, it's on the east side of the freeway. I think some people never cross the freeway sometimes.
But we don't know what's going to develop on the west side. You know, something might pull it all together. I think is kind of what look like a town, not this and this and this.
It looks that way now. We've got muddy paws. Not against muddy paws, but I mean, you go up that freeway, I mean, you've got all kinds of buildings that are different.
Well, yeah, but now this is kind of the center of the town.
Well, I think it's going to be the highlight of the town.
Well, there you go. That's probably a better way to put it.
Well, it's a chance to standardize, so we don't have that hodgepodge look here.
Right. I don't know if you ever get rid of that.
Well, you won't, but as you add, and there should be a fair amount of development coming our way. Takes one.
Hila, did you put a different, did you put a percentage on different textures?
I did not. I mean, we could certainly hold that in from another, whatever people were leaning towards, but we could...
So when you say masonry, Elizabeth, are you talking about like block?
See, when people talk about masonry nowadays, because I started to ask Leon about it, and he's like, well, you have ceramic, and you have, you know, block, and you have brick, and you have, like I said, I don't know if it's slate. I mean, I can't remember what the other brick is, you know what I mean, the flat one that's stacked, right stacked? I don't know what that's called. Does anybody know what that's called? And you know, okay, so ledge, if it's called led stone, yes, it's manmade. So, to me, that's all mason, you know what I mean, all masonry. And there's just different textures, and when you drive around with all those buildings, I think that's what you're seeing. Is there a metal component to it? To a lot of these buildings, there is. You know, like, all the balconies are, you know, metal in this particular one, so you are going to have a component of metal in, at least in this design, because all the balconies are metal. Or steel. Or aluminum.
So if we're looking at that building up there, the lower right? I was just there. Would you say that's half brick, or? What is that? Or you go up to the one above it, is that like one-third masonry, then the rest is panels? Is that what you're asking? Should we?
Right, it's kind of, you know, what are you considering? You know, right now it says brick. And so, and I think you have to well define it, because I will tell you, people will call me... They call me, and now they're calling Ben. And we keep looking at the definition, and we read the definition, and then they'll come up with what was it, Jesse? Washed Georgia stone? Like, I don't know if washed Georgia stone is in the list, because I don't know what that means. You know, and so you're faced with this question, okay, it's like, well, is it, is exposed masonry Georgia stone, you know, brick, or is that like tip-up panels? You know what I mean? It looks up like tip-up panels to me, but they're like, oh no, this is very special stone. Georgia. So that's why I think you have to kind of really have some flexibility, but give us a little bit more, so when we're on the telephone telling people what is required, that we have a real good idea of what we're telling them.
Well, we can build out this list with the extent possible. Again, there's, it's not going to be every possible thing you'll hear of, but and as far as was written, there's a, there's the primary surface materials, and we can talk about percentages, accent, and then there's a list of prohibited materials, and I don't say prohibited or just discouraged of some things that should be no-go in this area. So we can inform each of those. I mean, I'm looking at the list now in terms of, we have some things we can add from suggested pieces here, too, for sure.
Mr. Chair? May I ask the developers, do you have like a percentage right now, like of the materials that you have potentially set out here? To give us some kind of a, something to start off with? Okay.
So is that rock face block there?
And can you do that on the quad area over there? Can you do the two and a half feet below surface over there on the east, northeast quad? Mm-hmm, okay. Water table, okay.
Those windows down in the garage there, they're actually windows? Was there a venting system there? Are these windows open, or? So that's all blocked, then, up to that first? And then around the entranceway, that brown stuff, is that all blocked, too?
That's brick.
Brick, I mean. It's nice.
Okay, back over to you, Hila.
Yeah. Are we trying to be wrapping up soon, or is that, you said 20 minutes earlier, were you trying to? Just go back and, are we going back into the rest of the presentation, or what do you want to do now, at this point?
Where do you want to go, where do you want to go from here?
I mean, we're looking at double, you probably have, we're only about halfway through.
There's more to cover. I think some of it will go faster, but, I mean, I don't know. What's, what do you want to focus on right now? We can keep going, or?
What's the deadline on this here, though? Do we have a deadline?
They're pretty, they have a pretty aggressive timeline.
Well, that's why, where do we go next? I mean, I know that Hila's got this going, but what do we have to do?
We have to have a pretty good set of design standards, so that when they come in, we have a, we can actually approve, you know what I mean, they're looking for approval. My understanding is that it takes 12 to 13 months to build in an apartment building, and they'd like to start yet, this year.
Get footings in and all that?
So, while you don't have to make all your decisions tonight, there's still, there's still a meeting or two to, you know what I mean, get them done, but you can see the, you can see the struggle. They're trying to play, they're trying to get applications in using design standards, you know, the design standards. So they've heard what you said tonight as feedback. But that's what they're trying to do. They're trying to make a submittal from what I heard in September now.
So really, the percentages are quite important right now.
Yes, they are.
That's something that they would need to continue on.
Height and, and, yep.
So if the planning commission in two more weeks came to a pretty good conclusion, that will still work, or you... Did you get enough feedback from tonight, or to give them feedback? Okay. Yeah?
Would you want us to make a statement that this is a nice looking building, and this is the one that we would kind of favor, or?
Or something that you really, really don't like?
Well, take a hard look, everybody.
Well, I think the concern brought up on the hardy panels is something that really needs to be addressed, so that we don't have a waving, or the, it almost looks indented, like it was pressed in. That's something that's important, I know that.
That you'd look into further with the building?
With Leon? I was going to find out if there's thicker cement board that is better. I guess I don't know much about it, so...
Is there a different grade? I mean, is it common to see the hardy board in the panels like that, looking like that? I mean, do you get that a lot, or? Is that a defect in the material that? I know it is. I mean, there's criteria you got to use to install it and that. But, because we don't want that. Otherwise, I think it looks really nice. Really nice.
How about you, yeah?
Yeah, I like it.
Barb?
Just make sure you have the right standards on the material.
Jody?
Yeah, I think it looks very nice.
I think it does, too.
I think we're good with the height.
In that area, yep.
You know, when you talk about the way it's laid out, you know, it's curve around Hornsby there, and you do kind of get the front view, so...
Most of the building is south and north, right? I mean, people of the apartments, most of them will be looking south, and some will be looking north. Well, I hope we gave you some ideas there. I mean, is there anything else we can do?
We're good with the height, right?
The height?
The height we're good with.
Yeah.
Right, and so is the EDA, so as long as they're... Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for coming. Thanks for putting up all the public hearings. How's the IV doing? Good. So where do we go now? Want to spend the night here, talking?
Do you want to keep going through these, or do you want to?
Absorb them?
Absorb them? I mean, I know it's, this is an awful lot to process, and we've said that at every stage along here, but if we can have a productive discussion and talk a bit longer, that's great, but I don't want to sort of up to what you're thinking. As I said, we've gotten through much, we don't really say what's left. It's not as much as it looks like, because a lot of this isn't proposed to change that much, but maybe I can just really speak quickly of what's here, and then you can make a decision based on that. We stopped at building materials, and I can certainly, we can talk about augmenting that list, so it's more comprehensive, and maybe there's a little bit more definition of what those are, because there's might be some key definitions of what those are, like if someone says Georgia stone. If it's a brand, you probably wouldn't necessarily have, if it's a brand name product in here, want to call all those out, but at least categories could be defined a little bit better, so people understand what they are.
And percentages, maybe come back with a little?
I said, coming back with some percentages. I mean, sometimes it's a little tricky if you have multiple materials, you kind of... I don't know, other codes have done a good job with trying to figure that out. I'm just saying, it can get kind of complicated in terms of the percentage, because you say you have your primary materials, and you have your accent, and, but we'll come back, I can come back with a couple of different options.
Maybe we can have one material be 100%.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot of different ways to slice it.
A monotone. You can't have a monotone building.
There are some really good-looking one-color buildings, but the way buildings are built now, they're often built out of it just actually makes sense, too. Different colors.
So in process, just so you know what we're trying to do, we're trying to get some conclusions with certain things, so that Hila can put, articulate, you know what I mean, some of the highlights and such, and then turning it to the attorney, so he can actually draft an ordinance. But until we get the details, we can't draft an ordinance, and so that's, that's why she's trying to pull out of you the nuts and bolts of what we're trying to do here, because we can't draft an ordinance without some of the details.
Yeah, and again, some of these are going to there's no way we're going to make all the decisions tonight, but if we can make more decisions, this looks more, it's, there's more for the folks to work with in terms of building this out. Again, I'll go through, I'm going to mean out all the details, but what's in here. There's some discussion here about site design, and a little bit more details about screening, and layout of parking. In terms of how, your code is pretty silent right now in terms of like, how you screen parking lots, or whether or not it's just an open area, a lot of nicer developments have a little more treatment of their parking areas, so it talks about that, some discussion about screening of trash enclosures or outdoor utility elements is another common piece. That kind of wraps up the design standards. The dimensional criteria, there's really not a lot of changes in this one, unless people have some thoughts about those. Those often get varied anyway, based on the site design, like you mentioned earlier with the orientation of the building. Obviously, depending on your building, the site, depending on the orientation of your site, and your, and where your roadway comes in, and other elements, those are, not to say they don't matter, but... They're a starting place, you will obviously have to adjust some of the layout elements to the, to the particularities of the site. That's almost the definition of a variance. Not a lot of changes here, except for, we're just going to get to the discussion about height, and there's this height slide here. Right now, it's 50 feet, idea is 60 or 70, 75 feet. The idea of it being a little bit more than that, than just the round number is, in some mixed-use buildings, your ground floor is maybe higher, maybe it's like, maybe it's a 14-foot ground floor, because you have those higher ceilings in your retail uses, so it's just allowing a little more wiggle room if you have a taller first story, because it's not a residential use. So that's, the idea would be a little bit more for that, but that would not be, you could, you could also keep it at 70, and that'd be fine. But the, the idea would be that's equivalent of six, six stories. And then, there's some different elements at the back that I don't know if, there is a lot in here, but I'm not sure how much discussion it needs at this point. You have PUDs adding some more standards to the site. There's a lot here about interim uses, and this is basically going through your, what you allow in your interim use bin, and making sure that you're comfortable with all those. Because there's a lot of them. The one I actually flagged, that I have most of them just continuing, but I did flag billboards as a potential removal since we had that discussion about that being not a, not a good use in the higher density mixed use. And then there's just sort of a laundry list of a lot of different possible topics. These codes can get so complicated, and there's a lot more details than most people have a tolerance for in one setting, but there's discussions about, more about what exactly our accessory use is. I mean, parking, as mentioned earlier, is not necessarily, is, would be a typical accessory use, and your code kind of assumes that, but doesn't really call that out. There's sort of discussion about shared parking requirements between, if you have a mixed-use building. It's not just, it's not just one plus one, it's some combination thereof. Better pedestrian circulation on the site, enhanced lighting. A lot of codes talk a lot about drive-through facilities, and how you regulate those and manage them. If there's outdoor seating areas, like you have a restaurant with a outdoor cafe, how you deal with that. So there's a lot of different pieces here, again, because I put some of the other topics, because it's kind of more, I would say it's next level, but you could have a base code and not deal with these in detail unless they were important, and then you would want to, so... This called out, again, clearly you could spend the entire night and next day talking about these, depending on your preference, but I at very least wanted to get those in front of you, so you can think about, these are some of the decisions you need to make. Even if the decision is, we don't want to deal with that right now, or include it, it's, it's part of the, it's part of the options, so... So with that very quick overview of like lots of material, is there anything you'd really like to discuss tonight? Maybe that's the starting place, in terms of, you had, one of those things is really important to you, or you'd want to make sure we'd spend time on, or, or are there things that you could say? Oh, that's, that's good to know, but I don't, we don't need to, I don't feel the need to talk about that. We could just sort of read about it, mull it over, and be ready for next time.
Well, I think some of the other topics we should discuss maybe next time, because I think you bring up some good points that we should probably at least touch on. But I don't know if we want to go through them all tonight.
Yeah.
Do we have a quiet time coming up?
A quiet time?
No.
No, our, we'll, we'll continue. We, I can't even say that the agenda will be anything less, because I, I know that there's at least one more variance coming through, I have a subdivision. There's a conditional use permit, there's, so August is not quiet. Will you have another opportunity to discuss it at the meeting? Yes, for about an hour, like we did tonight. But there's two meetings in August, we only had one in July, so...
Okay. So should we come back to this, then?
I think so.
Come back?
Because we obviously can't do it all tonight.
Right.
So should we go on item number 13, then? Open forum? To public?
Come on, guys, come on.
We didn't wake you up on that one, did we?
We're here for you, come on.
No sleeping in that, in that third row back there. Okay, nobody stepped up for that. Information, city administrators report?
I have nothing else to report.
Oh, we love you.
Oh, thanks.
The planning commission report, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Barb?
Nothing to report.
I just have a quick report. I've had a couple of different neighbors approach me about traffic and safety on Kettle River. So, be it, I just want to kind of give a warning that if you haven't already started to get some calls, we've had a couple of close calls with neighbor kids on Kettle River, and I walk a lot, and it's crazy how unsafe it is. I had suggested to her that possibly, you know, to come in and speak to the city council. I know it's a county road, but it's still amongst our city, and, you know, if we start to rattle some cages and shakes and chains, we might be able to, but my neighbor girl, somebody just came barreling out of their driveway, and they were, they didn't look, they just almost took my neighbor girl out, so...
Did somebody back on out?
Oh, yeah, they just backed out, you know, as fast as they could go, and, yeah, not even good, so...
What about the trucks, any complaints of the amount of trucks, or?
On Kettle River? Not so much on Kettle River, but it's just more about non-compliance to the speed limit, to not paying attention. I can't tell you, I've been walking miles and miles and miles, and people are just looking down at their phones, and I come from 168th, and as I'm walking up towards Howard Lake, I just stand there and wait for the person to come to the right and not look, and turn onto Kettle River.
I wouldn't walk that road.
Yeah, I know, I get off of it as fast as I can, but, and I also even had to, the sheriff did it, one of the, I don't know which deputy did it, and I, he, as he was seeing me, I just, you didn't look either, you know, so it's not, it's not uncommon, but just wanted to give a little formal notice that, probably going to hear a little bit more about that from neighbors in that area.
Do you think anyone called? Because I did notice a sheriff sitting on Kettle River.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't doubt it, you know, she asked what I suggest, and I said I suggest coming and speaking, you know, here.
Call the sheriff and say...
I'll report something, call it into the sheriff, write something in the paper, you know, so...
Well, I have one issue, not issue, I, I don't know how many, I don't go down that road very often, but I see they painted the Southbound Columbus on the bridge.
Yeah.
It's really nice, on a southbound.
On a southbound only.
Yeah, but it's really nice looking.
It looks nice, I haven't got the trees done yet, but...
Yep.
Now you can see it.
And you know, I don't know, is that supposed to be green?
No, black.
Black, it is black.
Yep.
I'm not that I'm colorblind, but it looked black to me.
The trees will be green, but the, the Columbus was black.
Yeah, it looks nice.
And we'll never have to, we'll never have to replace it.
I don't go down that way much, but, yeah, very good. Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
So how long do I have to wait till we take a vote?
Right now. 10 minutes.
Everybody in favor?
Thank you, Hila. Thank you, Ben, for all your work.
It's a lot for you folks to process, too, so...